You look like a medifier. You sleep. We ain't done no babies at home pooping you up. Well, that's it. There we go.
We tried. I'm sorry. We're gonna have to let you go.
Active shooter killings are a tragic, unpredictable reality. And one has to come unattain.
Since 2006, the US has averaged an active shooter event with four or more deaths every 2.9 months.
Active shooter events has been increasing. Your odds of being involved in one are still very slim. But just like fire drills and earthquakes, making a plan in advance can make all the difference. If you do find yourself in the middle of a senseless attack, the why doesn't matter.
Hey buddy.
There's something happening.
What matters is surviving.
On average, 20 mass shootings take place in the US every year.
Killers usually choose their victims at random. They look for easy targets. So the harder you are to see or to hit, the safer you are. When the attack starts, if you can find a way out of the location, do so.
Get out.
If you stay calm and think clearly when you remember the life and death event, you'll improve your chances of making it out. Visualize your movements in advance.
What are we gonna do?
Oh wait, let's get it out. Stay behind me. Stay there.
Use cover, something that will stop a bullet. And conceal, something that at least keeps you out of sight.
Attention, South Carolina, it's code three response, need a break at 2:45 GSB, 417. It's going to be a shot on the wall. Suspect's wearing a face mask, possibly a body armor.
Use any available means to get out, including emergency exits or windows. Most restaurants and retail locations will also have exits in their back through kitchens or stock rooms. Even in the best cases, police are minutes, not seconds away. You must take action to protect yourself.
Okay. Everybody stay calm. It's probably just a drill.
No, go back, go back. Oh my god, oh my god.
If you can help others without putting yourself in unnecessary danger, do so.
What do you want?
Who are you coming home?
It's gonna be okay.
If you can't move safely to an exit, get to a room or a confined area you can lock down. And secure the location.
Secure your location? Oh my god.
There's the main sheet.
Everybody stay calm. Remember how we train. Everybody get in this corner. Open the windows. Get the emergency bag from my desk. Help her.
Drywall won't stop a bullet. But there are steps to take to stay safe. Lock or barricade the doors. Turn off the lights. Move away from any windows. And silence your cell phone.
The other door doesn't lock. Leave desks or anything, just block it.
A large emergency bag can include your first aid kit, gloves, emergency plans for the building, and casualty cards to alert first responders to any wounded victims.
Most active shooter situations average run in 10 to 15 minutes.
Attention, Lakeview, it's code three, need a break at 2:45 GSB, 417. It's gonna be at Allen County College. Multiple victims down.
Law enforcement's first responsibility when entering an active shooter situation is to stop the suspect, not to bring their aid to the victims. Medical teams will enter the scene as soon as the suspect is no longer a threat or is confirmed in another location. Silence any cell phones and remain quiet. Do not alert the shooter to your presence.
Sheriff's Department, there's a rental inside.
Hey, Connor.
Just stay tight. We'll be back to get you.
Defend yourself.
If you cannot escape the location and you can't shelter in place, you may have to defend yourself as a last resort. Almost anything can be turned into an improvised weapon. Look for something that can disrupt the shooter's ability to see, breathe, or control their weapon. When law enforcement arrives, they're going to be in a heightened state of readiness and awareness, looking for any aggressive movements. So keep your hands visible and follow any commands.
It should.
I just, I shot it. I just saw one shooter.
Especially in developing situations, engaging law enforcement, running toward them, reaching for them, even to thank them, could put people at risk.
Surviving an active shooter. For more information.
One thing we stress to the employees, if you'll pay attention to what the narrator stated, it is not the job of the first responders when we arrive on scene to provide the first aid if there's still an active shooter. And that's gonna be tough to do in a small town, in a small building like this, we know each other. But if an active shooter is still walking around, we will have to bypass somebody that's laying on the ground injured. Our first priority is to stop the person who stole it from the shooter. If I don't, if I stop to help you and he comes out and shoots me, now he has my gun, my ammunition, and we're just compounded with threats. So they have to understand that they hold tight, lay down, and barricade themselves until we can clear the building and get them out. And it's gonna be tough to do, but this is what's gonna have to happen. I know it's kinda hard being the watch, but it brings forth these things right here. Run, hide, and fight. The safest action a person can take when hearing or being notified of a violent person in their workplace is to evacuate, exit, or run from the buildings as quickly as possible. If exiting the building is not an option, then the next safest action to take is to barricade or hide yourself from the suspect. This can be done by hiding behind doors, large objects, under desks, behind boxes or equipment. On the face of the possibility of not being able to exit or safely hide, employees should consider fighting back against the suspect. This can be accomplished by throwing items at the suspect, books, chairs, phones, fire extinguishers, anything to distract or stop the attack. I've got three seconds, I can reload my gun. But if I got an office chair flying at me, it's gonna make that a lot harder. And if I have someone jumping on me after that, then pretty much you can help stop the threat. So it's very important, if you can't do those first three, fighting back's probably the only way to survive. We talked about evacuating or exiting the building. Employees need to be familiar with the different routes to exit the workplace. Know where the exit door is located in your building. Where the staircases are located in your building. And know if you can exit through an office window safely and if you have the tools to break the window. For the employees working offices that have windows that don't open, we encourage them to be using any device to break those windows. Each city-owned building should have a barricading device installed to keep the doors secure and prevent entry into the offices. These devices are made by Nightlock Lockdown. We have two of this building. You can see them at both doors and on the wall. The devices are attached to the walls inside the offices at head level. They are secured inside a clear plastic box which opens easily by pulling a tab. And that's what it looks like hanging on the wall. Actually, we have one on the center of the table if you'd like to look at it. To install it, with the office door closed, send for the slide the Nightlock device into the slot in the floor, securing the door from the inside. It only goes in one way, so it only fits, you can't mess it up. You can do this, stick it around. Here's a better picture of what it looks like once it's correctly installed. We did exhaustive search of a lot of different tools for barricading doors from the inside and then pretty much this is the top one we were able to find. Incredible, incredible device. Talk about barricading and hiding. After the device has been installed and the door is secured, the employee should hide in the corner along the same wall as the door, but furthest away. This gives the employee the best angle to hide from gunshots should an armed suspect shoot through the door at different angles. So what does it look like? The diagram shows. You should hide in the two corners opposite of the door, on the same side, at where the bullets can get you. Alright, so about fighting back, and all other avenues of escape are unavailable. And hiding isn't going to prevent the shooter from finding you. Fight back. Don't just lay down and become a helpless victim. Your best is to slow down and stop the shooters, limit the amount of injuries or death that they could inflict. Throw any objects at them, attack the shooter, reload his firearm, do anything. After spraying him with that, a good smack across the head would probably do what you need to do. That fires, it's a red button. Obviously, this group here was probably in a break room. They used whatever was at their disposal to distract or take the shooter off his game. So in conclusion for our training, in the event of an active shooter incident, the City of Perry employee will use the strategies of run, hide, and fight, as provided by US Department of Homeland Security, to survive the event, to include using the Nightlock device if possible. And these strategies will not only help our employees while they're here working, but if they're not here. And they're at their kid's school, or they've gone to their spouse's place of residence or mall. So if they're not armed themselves, employing the run, hide, and fight can be the one thing to say. Any questions? Thank you very much.
You have any questions? Item 3D, Economic Development Department from Economic Development website. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor and Council, if you will indulge me in utilizing your wonderful devices you have, please go to the following address. I'll give you all a moment. I had this all set up up here, but some sort of compatibility issue. But this actually lets you play around a little bit more and go ahead and save on your tab. Sure.
Perry Business. PerryGABusiness.org.
Yes. PerryGABusiness.
Perry, it was all together. PerryGABusiness.org. Yes? No, no dashes. You get started with everything. Perry. GA. It's not dash. WWW.
PerryGAWhat?
G-A Business. Sorry.
G-A.
Yes. You get it? It's at org.
No, no, this is the wrong.
PerryGABusiness.org. Just put it in your, um... Yeah, out there. Put it in the address.
There we go. Get in there. Feel free to play around.
I've gotten out of the class.
And I got, I mean, I got a person being targeted.
Alright. Alright, good, good.
This one gave it a far away.
It is. Oh, that's, that's just still easy, put it down. Okay. That's, that's a little more progress. Okay. You will remember this past summer, you authorized moving forward with a website dedicated for economic development here in the city. This is considered the best practice amongst municipalities that are serious about economic development. What this does is it allows the city to have a specifically designed webpage that not only attracts people to the City of Perry via our websites, but also provides the information that they're looking for in regards to starting a business here in the City of Perry. So what you have for you is the current iteration of this website. It is still a little bit a work in progress. We'll see that there's some things that still need to be filled in here. But we're planning on going live with it this week. So I wanted obviously y'all to have the first look at the website before we go live with it. It was created here locally by Patrick Cooper, Patrick Recreating Services. And I think you did an excellent job of putting this together. The whole goal again is to provide... I don't want to say one-stop shop, but I guess, I don't know what it is. Where someone can come and provide, and retrieve all of the information they need when thinking about considering opening a business or growing a business here in Perry. You can see there's a, you know, why Perry, the location, the market, quality of life, recreational use, or all that type of stuff. And each of those in the dropdown menu goes to a different page that highlights the amenities that we have here in the City of Perry. This is a specific section for site selectors. This is just the general demographic information that they're looking for from the city. You know, there are a number of national brands and things that we're gonna look at the locating community. They wanna know how many households we have, how many cars are driving by specific locations in a certain amount of time, traffic jams. So we're trying to buy all that right there so they can find it easily. And we're going to incorporate downloadable printable reports as well. Business assistance. This is a lot of the stuff that we have the city to offer. Opportunity zones, of course, a new rural zone for downtown businesses. Excenters, that type of thing. And we'll be building out all of these as time goes on and making sure it's kept fresh. One thing that I think particularly makes our website stand apart, if you click on the media tab up top, takes you to a wonderful page that kind of agglomerates, if you will, all of our social media stuff, things that are in the news, a lot of just positive things about the City of Perry, what's going on in the City of Perry. Kind of provides it a very attractive, user-friendly format. So I think that's something that's great. There's a section for the Main Street Advisory Board. And then resources. That's gonna basically be a number of links and things from partners. House Development Authority, Central Detective College, Georgia Department of Health and National Defense. So again, it's a work in progress. But we're doing a lot of different things to make this the best it can be for the City of Perry to maximize its effectiveness for the City of Perry. For instance, search engine optimization, that type of thing. When people Google Perry Business, that type of thing, this should be right at the top of that list. As you all are probably aware, it's one of the situations where when you Google something, you obviously, you often don't go past the first page. So you wanna be on that first page. This will allow us to do that. And there's lots of just good visuals on here, a lot of videos, you know, things that are attractive to the eye and draw people. It's something people want nowadays, video content. Again, I'm very pleased with what we have so far. Again, we plan on going live this week at some point with it. But why don't y'all take a look at it? If there's any questions you have, if there's any sort of input or feedback you might have in regards to the website prior to us going live, feel free to reach out to me and let me know what that might be. Welcome to incorporate that. What do y'all think? Looks good. It's good. Good. Glad to hear that. Ellen, in particular, worked very hard on this. Again, doing a fantastic job, just like she is for all of our other stuff, so... If you have any questions, feel free to reach out if you do come across any, if you have any input. We'll get it squared away. Thank y'all.
Item 3C is under administration. Item 3C 1 is review the design build proposal for the former Sinclair Station.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I don't have all this fancy stuff like these other guys. All I have is a basic simple memo. You may remember that we had talked about, well, we did go off the bid for doing rehab on the Sinclair Station, the former News Peggy's. And that bid came in around 131, I think, or so. And Council was considering options relative to that. Y'all had a request to extend out and go back out for a design bid, which we did. And you see the two results in my March 28 memo, which is also with your packet there, for McRice and Obolus Construction Company. If you were going to go with either one of those, staff recommends McRice based on review because they came in with the best proposal. They also were the least expensive. However, I'd like to point out again that if you award this project, you would only stabilize the site. You would not do any more than that on the building. So whatever type of subsequent use that you might be interested in having for that facility, you'll have to pay additional money in order to do that. And because of that, and since there is no strong need, you may remember that the surrounding area there is all going to be legacy park. The administration's recommendation, this is the same as it was on October 27th, that you consider just demolishing the building and putting up a new one. Now, have not had an opportunity to get back with Ms. Loudermilk. You may remember that the Peri Area Historical Society had indicated that they were going to try and raise some matching money for this project. So you may just wanna consider that right now. We'll contact Ms. Loudermilk and have her come in, talk to you. Probably, I guess, at your next work session, if you can, so it's all right. The only thing I do say on this, and of course, it's probably typical management, is that anything that should be considered coming from this group needs to be actual cash. Not pledges, not hopes. Everybody would be, has actual dollars and cents that the group has. And even if they are successful raising some type of money, I'm not sure, at least from administration's standpoint, whether that would compensate or overcome the cost versus the actual long-term benefit of saving the structure.
Comments, Council?
I think we need to move on. Move on, push it over. Do what I want you to. She can't raise that number. Not for that project. Like, for lots of other.
I think we owe them, you know, to hear, like you said, hear from them and see what do they do. If not, just push it down. You know, to hear from what they're saying, you know, how much money they're gonna raise. Then we can go from that point. What we gonna do anyway? Try like a lot. In our mind, we already know what we're gonna do. But let's hear from them, let's give them the option to come back to us because they were brought to us and they wanted to raise some money, you know, kinda save the bill. And so we said, okay, do that. But we need to hear from Ms. Loudermilk, what we up to do, and see what they have raised and what they were doing. I know you'd be wanting to have to tell them.
The debt we're giving out, I think we need to find them that we're not looking for them just to raise the money to help stabilize it. We want a commitment for the reconstruction of the building. So, and what's the building gonna be used for. I hate to agree to stabilize the building without any plan whatsoever and not having any idea that it might cost us another quarter million dollars. Because I would rather see that money that the city would have to put in going into enhancing that project. That's kind of an expensive project that'll deal with. And I'd rather see those amenities in the new park than possibly spending three or four hundred thousand dollars on a building.
But I make that point, but like you said, let them know a front.
I think we owe it, I think we owe it a courtesy to them, but at least let them come and talk and hear our views on it and then move on from there. But I think, I truly think everybody's sitting at this table, so we're at consensus. But I think we did invite them into the tent and we need to let them know what we're gonna be doing going forward.
Mr. Moore, if you would, place this item on the next work session agenda and make sure that she and any others, that we're gonna make sure that Ms. Loudermilk is aware that we are lacking participation. Anything else under that item? Item 3C 2 is considered alternative signs for non-city maintained streets. Let's go.
Yes. I've observed, I don't think intentionally or anything, but when you go around the city, there are a few places that may have an identification sign that historically has been done in the same colors that the city signage is, which is the green and white, which is what's required by the federal for more signage, street signage. However, these streets are maybe drives or streets, for example, they might be going into like an apartment complex or some type of unit like that, or they may be going into a privately maintained subdivision, for example, Houston Springs. And so I think that it would be advantageous for us to continue to do the identification to help people find places, which of course Council's committed to. But that the color scheme for those types of identification for streets or drives would be a different color than the green background with the white lettering. So I am open to any suggestion that you all may have, as long as it is distinctive.
Well, you know, if you're standing there with a standard and the state requires us to have a standard sign, I think we just need to stick with what we're requiring here, you know?
Well, yes, we'll stick with ours.
Okay.
Okay, but for example, if you go out, if you go out Macon Road, just coming out of downtown, and I forget what the apartment, it's not. It's actually landing. Perry, I think it is, or something like that. Here, okay.
They put up a new sign.
Yeah, there's a street sign. So if you take a look at that, you would think that, okay, it's a city street, we're gonna maintain it. But it's not. It's a drive going into the park. Okay? If you're out on Airport Road Extension, it's pretty obvious, obviously, where Houston Springs is. But for example, they now have two roads in to Houston Springs off of Airport Road Extension. So it's probably advantageous to have an identification, a street sign out there about what those streets are going into Houston Springs. But those streets are privately maintained. You know, the city's not responsible for it. So whatever that identification is, for example, Houston Springs Drive or whatever, the administration is recommending to you that that be a different color scheme than our standard, or green with a white background. Now, it doesn't matter what that color scheme is, however more distinctive it is, the better off you are. So there's no misunderstanding. I'll give you an example about, I don't, I don't think there's a street sign out there, but the drive that goes back to Villages of Camelot, I think it is.
There's a sign there.
Okay, is there?
There.
You know, there are a number of people who have called requesting, is the city gonna go back? Maybe Mr. Walker talked about, is the city gonna go back and maintain the drive back in there? You know, what about somebody parking at the stop sign there? See what I mean, all these type of things? Well, they're not our responsibility. In essence, it's private property. And so there, or a very quick way to identify that would be if they had some type of different color scheme on it.
Would you also, would it be appropriate? Would you also, would it be appropriate to add private drive under, I've seen some communities that they name the streets, but right under it, did you see the lettering, private drive?
You could, or some of the others have like a block on the end, it's just a private.
Do they, do they have to do that, or do the residents, they do that?
No, they don't do that.
It's not consistent all over town.
I know, but you said, maybe they have to.
No, no, I've said I have seen it before. I have seen it before, in other places, that, to make it distinctive.
Right, now, this would, this would only be where you had their drives or streets intersecting publicly maintained streets. So for example, further back in, like, again, using House and Springs as an example, they can use whatever scheme they want inside House and Springs because we aren't in there to maintain it. Okay, but when you come out onto Airport Road, then you have, for example, using that, that'd be Airport Road Extension. But it's also very good, I think, to have, which we're working on, is every one of our intersections, you have both of the streets identifying where you're at, not just.
What is in the street, is it L E C T that's over there next to the Ramadian? Isn't that a private street?
L E C T.
Yeah, whatever that, L E C T, no, that's, that's, I thought it was private.
No, no, that's a road down in the coal site. That, that whole road is, is accepted from the, like, I better turn that subdivision, commercial subdivision, this.
But, but another one that's, that's going to develop is one over where Holliday Express is and the Harries, that drive going in there, that's private. Or the one that comes up sometimes is the entrance to Walmart, you know, the other side of Hampton Court. You know, that's also private over there as well.
That wrong relation, that, that come around from North Smith Bay, right? That's speaking from that.
No, other side, other side of San Diego.
Okay, other side.
Right.
I agree, I think we need a separate color scheme.
I propose you do this back in white and use the lettering off, off the palette. We have, we have a red color in the palette, green palette, so you have a consistent red color throughout the video. It would match up with whatever color we use in our wayfinding and everything else.
Mr. Lawrence, is that ideal, or?
But, you know, the white would be, but it would be distinctly different than anything we have in town.
I got a question, how are we going to keep this stuff from copying our sign? How are we going to do that, you know, like you said?
Well, they can, if they want, they do anything they want to, they may. As long as it's inside their complex and they match up our signs if they want to, but I don't think they will.
Well, if they put it out at the intersection and we'll come out, take it down, and put up our record.
Can you have one that, and they're going to call you from around there? You know, it's a sort of, it's sort of, not a real bright red, it's sort of a muted red.
It's sort of a rusty.
Rusty red, so.
It's called burnt umber.
You can make it a black.
It's called burnt umber.
We do have Gilmore Green, I was thinking about that, in our color palette.
That's still, that's still too close.
If you look at our, all of our trucks, it has the green stripe on them, all those are reflective stripes, you can do it, you can get any color in.
It'd look, it'd look the same, structure-wise, as any of our other street signs, just the color concept would be different.
Any other thoughts? I'm assuming the consensus is to move forward. Council?
That's not it.
Anything else, item 3, review and discussion we need to address?
No, sir.
Hugh, item 4, council member items, Mr. Jackson, no sir, Ms. Walker, no sir, Ms. Bannister Race? Mr. King?
There's a thing about the potholes in the road, but they got the ones filled over there by the best, which is, I don't know if, you know, so, I do look for potholes, I tell them. So you need to get them filled up, you know, the fence is on our street.
I think they've been doing really tough, they're kind of pretty active here the last couple of weeks.
One on the north side, and I leave, and that stop sign, we always have them. Thinking of being on the west side. There's two there. There's none. Hugh? Gilmore?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Going back on the issue with the potholes. You see them, just shoot me a text or give me a call, we're going to take care of, ran in the crew real good. And then also, wanted to announce the next Spring Neighborhood Cleanup Day. It's going to take place in Old Field on April 21st, of course, it's a Saturday. And for the first time, we're going to be meeting at Hathley Park that day. And we're going to be fanning out over by the Perry Primary School, then back in traditional Old Field behind the church there. So it should be a great day. Houston County Habitat for Humanity has already committed like eighty volunteers or something. So they continue to be a wonderful partner for us. But I have flyers, we need to, and we'll be getting the word out on that. Thank you.
What was that, April what?
April 21st. 8:30.
Anybody else, Mr. Smith?
No, sir, thank you.
Ms. Walker?
Yes, sir, a couple of things. Today, city closed on three downtown properties, actually, it's five of the downtown properties. So the city's moving forward and retaining those. And then we'd also like to introduce Josh Waters tonight, that he'll be joining our firm April 16th officially. But he's going to be helping out, doing a lot of the city work, and we're real excited, glad to come in and join us.
Very good. Go forward, do you have anything?
Just glad to, glad to be joined, excited about the opportunity to foredoor with everybody.
Very good, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Michael Rollins.
He'll figure it out.
Thank you, sir.
Item 5, Department Head Staff Item. Ms. Warren? Hugh? Ms. King? Ms. King?
Just, we're two months out from our June 2 tax sale. We have approximately, less than a hundred and twenty thousand in taxes to collect, delinquent taxes. But that list is still dwindling daily, and as time gets closer, we'll provide you all of this, and if you would like to see it, that's what's outstanding.
I'll message you on YouTube. Do what we need to do. Hold on, I'm not on it.
Just thought you might, I want to take a look.
I figured I'd hurt myself from somewhere.
Anything else? Your turn.
Mr. Mayor, I'm filling in for Mr. Woods tonight, sitting in for him. The only one thing is to, just to add a positive note, that last month, we probably hit another record as far as individual, single-family home permits. I think the number was thirty-eight for a month, so.
Wow.
The development is still very positive.
That's good news. That's good news. And if you don't mind, I need to ask you a question before you leave. Sure. A procedural thing, if somebody asks me, I could make it.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
That's it, sir.
Okay. Mr. Duck?
Yes, sir, I have a few items to share. First off, I saw the Facebook post about the walk, and I hope everybody, it looked like everybody had a really good time out there seeing the new trail section and, and what we got to offer. I know there's a lot of people using them when I go out there myself, so, that was, that was a good thing to see. Our kids fishing rodeo, this will be the third year in a row we've had it, that will be on April 21st, for kids ages six to twelve. Need to be there by 8:30 a.m. to sign up. It is free, and we're in pride, the same as always. It's a good afternoon event. And we have two sports, they're going to be kicking off next week on April the 10th. It's going to be adult softball and our tee ball program. So those sports are going to be up and running, they've been practicing, but now they're going to be in the game. Last but not least, if you have not been out by Creekwood, gym room has started on the splash mat. By the look of the first day, stuff was powdered, it was being held together by the paint, the concrete, so.
Sir?
How is the armory coming as far as, well, they're called armory, this was the progress of the bathrooms and so forth?
It had their first events this past weekend, as I understand it, so we're open to it.
I can probably answer that for you, sir. It's, I've been looking after the construction of that. For the most part, it is complete, we're probably at ninety-six, ninety-seven percent. I went on Friday and did the punch list to the contractor. It was not a long, long list, but there were a few items on there that's going to cause some attention, and hopefully, by late next week, we should be a hundred percent.
Sorry, sir. Chief Lee?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you still do economic development?
Yes, sir. Nothing further, nothing further, sir.
This gets confusing. Chief Porter?
Yes, Mayor, Council, just one, one quick thing. You'll notice on your board pack that tomorrow night, we'll be discussing the, some surplus vehicles for the department. Just want to go and let you know what those are. One is our ninety-six Pierce ladder truck. And on that one specifically, the city of Centerville is going to vote tomorrow night to make an offer to the city of Perry for forty thousand dollars to purchase that vehicle. And speaking with the manager on this, you know, one of the things that's going to do is going to keep that ladder truck within Houston County, which will be another asset for us should we need it down the, down the road somewhere in the future for support or mutual aid. And it also would be a government-to-government purchase for them. And, but the other three, we have a nineteen ninety, a nineteen eighty-eight military R-11 tanker that we have sitting in Station Two. We want to surplus that one. There's the ninety-two K M V Pumper, and then the nineteen ninety-seven Chevy thirty-five hundred cargo truck. That's the other one that we want to surplus as well, so, just letting you know what those are before they come up tomorrow night. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Nothing tonight.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Council. Just a couple of things. So, at the state level, some pretty good news, of course, they just had some, and of the eleven bills that have made it through the crossover, it looks like a lot of them passed, including military retirees. One that's on there that I'm very excited about, military retiree pay is not going to be taxed. So that one will be fantastic, obviously, all of them need to be signed. That is going to take us off the that boy list. We were one of the only nine states that made the tax military retiree pay. Now that, now that that won't be implemented, hopefully, people will choose to stay in Georgia when they retire. That especially impacts, I'm thinking, Florida, both our South Carolina folks, but obviously, people in middle Georgia will be impacted by that as well positively. A couple others on there, Georgia Defense Initiative was reestablished, it's going to be a funding, Backstreet Center is getting the full funding that they were looking for. So I think for middle Georgia, we have some, some good news there. The budget, as you guys saw on the news, was, was just passed, pretty good for Robbins Airport Base, and is supportive of the J-SARS and continuing the recap development on the J-Service fully funds. The current operations and for the recapitalization, one hundred and five million dollars going towards that. So we'll continue to watch that closely as they discuss the Air Force proposals for the recap. They are going to begin FY nineteen NDA negotiations, April 26th. So of course, we're, we're watching that closely, working with the legislative folks, okay? So that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions. The, anything is that you want me to carry back to the state, you guys are saying those questions to the federal folks as well, military ones, always, always.
I got a question, sir, I heard that, that that law about the iPhone, did that, did you hear the thing, you know, that chief or?
I don't think it's been signed yet, but yeah, you probably, the chief, you probably would know better than I do.
It's, it, yeah, it's, it's passed, it hasn't been designed. Take the fact that July 1, where you want, if you're holding phone in your hand, then you're violating the law. It all has to be hands-free, no using the device or anything handheld.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
That includes dialing, too, that might, too.
Yes.
So if you're trying, just out of your.
My understanding is if you're holding it, that's, that's the prima facie evidence for legal case.
As long as it's, I'm going to hold it on my dash, I can.
I don't know about that, I haven't, I haven't read the final version of it yet.
Yeah, I've got a holder, and I'm not holding it, but they either answer a phone, to answer my phone, I got to touch it.
Right.
In some way, I could swipe it or the other.
I'll, I'll go read the final version and see what, what came out.
And the penalty is what? Is, is it penalty as high as I heard it was, three fifty?
Let's still talk about that and some significant points on your license, too. This is all to save lives because there's so many people killed and injured through distracted driving every year. And it's a growing problem. And it's not all fun, you know, sometimes they're eating, putting their makeup on, whatever, you know?
Read a book.
Slapping the kids in the backseat, you know, looking out the back window instead of the front, I mean, read a book.
Read a book. I would give you five bucks for it.
Even when a field profession was there, she was one doctor, a priest, was leading, and I told him to turn left, he turned right, he was reading.
Thank you very much. Our meetings, next meeting is tomorrow night, the council visit, five council visits.